Good evening and welcome to the June 23, 2008 Planning Commission meeting. Will you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as
Will the clerk please call the roll? Commissioner Adam?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher?
Here.
Commissioner Grumney?
Here.
Commissioner Len?
Here.
Chair Reynolds? Here. Now is the time for public comments, and I do have one card. Mr. Nick Echbal Kidway, will you please come forward and state your name and city of residence? And you have five minutes.
I begin the name of God, whose most beneficial, most merciful chair, Darrell Reynolds. I mean, it's a pleasure that the chair can pronounce my name and use Echbal also. I appreciate that, even though, I mean, I hate to be negative, but that's the reality, unfortunately, about government at all levels. You know, I've been asking your bosses, the planning, the city council, to provide minutes, and most of them have been alleviated from the Planning Commission, and you have draft minutes available in your packets, and they just are hiding their minutes, and for good reason. Even you folks have gone down the slippery slope. I mean, this is the draft minutes that you're going to approve, public comments, Nick Kidway, comma, Newberry Park. Speakers on the application, Mitchell Khan, attorney, pro, Nick Kidway, pro. I guess next time I bring my minutes from the good old days or the bad old days. I mean, minutes, I mean, this is a fundamental notion of democracy, of the American form of government, that there be an agenda, there be minutes, that the citizens be given an opportunity to participate. I mean, for, there's two people in this whole chamber with 280 bulbs, according to a planning director on his last night. I think it's gone up more than that, with gas at $4.59 a gallon. And, you know, I'm straying from the subject, but basically, minutes are supposed to be so that anybody reading them, and like right now, I would like to read the minutes of the Oaks Planning Commission hearing, which went from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM, and see, get the flavor of what the community said. And I can assure you that there would be a dozen pages of public comments or the comments of the citizens, because there would be a paragraph or at least two sentences as to what Frances Prince said, well, she was a VIP, but what Joe Blow said. I mean, you can go down one level, and I would recommend the planning commissioners to ask that if you're not going to do anything about this. It'd be like a wonderful school board, which competes for being citizen unfriendly with the city council. They are doing this, and I'm not kidding, go on the website, and you can see, they put speaker number one, speaker number two, they don't even put the names of citizens who come forward. So no wonder people do not want to participate in their government. If the planning, if the TO TV can go to the overhead, just want to show the upcoming meetings page that I have, oh, okay, that one is not live. Well, this is another new one, so I don't know how to zoom in, but thank you, TO TV. I mean, I was on the Budget Task Force, which is an important body, I think. I was also on the Residents' Roundtable. Both of these bodies were dismantled by the city council, because they think that there isn't enough work to justify spending staff time. I rise up and I've come over here, that there ain't enough work for the Planning Commission to meet bi-monthly. I don't think there's even work, enough work here to meet monthly, because the city is in a, at, in a build-out phase. I mean, to have this meeting tonight, and last night, last meeting, I remember, the director talked about the July meeting, which is going to have six items. I said, oh, okay, things are, but if you look closely at it, it's basically three wireless projects and one Westlake property, which is written twice, just like tonight's meeting is written four times in upcoming meetings. I mean, we are going through tough times in this country. I mean, everybody is, in the business world, who, who's the one that makes it possible for the bureaucrats to have this leisurely lifestyle, are going through trimming. My company, and everyone, yes, this is, there's 17 planners and technicians. And the other thing is, these things are hidden. I mean, your, what is your core responsibility? It is land use issues, not the, who's going to be playing at the Civic Arts Plaza, or who is in the library reading to the kids. Those are all good things, but your focus primarily should be in, this plan, website does not really have the public hearings or the meetings like this development report, which is hidden away, should be on the first page. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. We'll continue on to written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Town?
I had none at this time, thank you.
Thank you. And we will go to case 6A. Will the clerk please call the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda item 6A regarding case Municipal Code Amendment, MCA 2007, 70727, 70728, 70729, 70730. Applicant, City of Thousand Oaks. Request, the city is proposing amendments to the municipal code to implement an affordable housing ordinance. The ordinance is comprised of four affordable housing programs, including, one, an inclusionary housing program, two, a non-residential development linkage fee program, three, a density bonus program, and four, an affordable housing trust fund. Location, citywide. Recommendation, that the Planning Commission recommend the city council approve MCA 2007, 70727, 70728, 70729, and 70730.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission.
Good evening, Mr. Hatcher, will you be giving the staff report?
Yes, ma'am, I will.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to preface this by saying that this is a follow-on to a background presentation that we gave to you on April 28, and what we've tried to do is not be too redundant with what we did that night. So the presentation, we're just going to briefly touch on background again, and then we are going to talk specifically about some of the components of the ordinance. And I'll also say that we've, in deference to you, we've tried to make this brief, so we're going to hit the high points and rely on your specific questions, maybe to fill in some of the blanks. So just by way of background, just to remind everybody kind of how long this process has been going on, this was actually recommended in the housing element prior to the 2000, 2005 housing element, which is about to be replaced. It also has its origins in an affordable housing opportunities study that was done in 2002, and then a rather arduous undertaking of an affordable housing ad hoc committee appointed by city council that met, I believe, 28 times, and out of that, they developed recommendations that the council held a workshop on and directed staff then to go forward with consideration of these ordinances. We did that first step through analysis from May to November 2007, and we'd just like to point out that that component of the work also included three meetings of focus groups convened for both residential and the non-residential components of this, in order to elicit some public participation. And then I believe some of the members of those focus groups are in the audience this evening. And then just most recently, we were directed by council at their November meeting to go forward with initiating these ordinances, and those initiating resolutions are in your packet as attachment C, and contain some parameters that council directed at that time. So that brings us to the actual specifics of the ordinance, and again, there's four municipal code amendments dealing with four programs, and they have been bundled into one ordinance, that's the Affordable Housing Ordinance. Article one is just general provisions, we won't spend much time talking about that, it's general citations and definitions. We rely on definitions of the general zoning ordinance, except where they're specific to this particular program. Article two is the formation of a housing trust fund. Again, that's a fund that's intended to be a repository for funding for affordable housing. This article basically formalizes that it's going to be a separate account within the city budget. It designates certain funding sources, some of which are established by these programs, and then it also designates that this funding is used exclusively for purposes of affordable housing. Article three is the inclusionary housing program. Again, this program deals with requirements for providing a certain percentage of affordable housing units within residential developments of a certain size or the payment of a fee. And this program applies to new construction and condominium conversions, and you can satisfy that requirement in one of two ways. One is actually producing units on-site, and the other is through the payment of in-lu fees. And while we're not talking about specific fee amounts tonight, we would like to note that the fee structure's been bifurcated into two, one dealing with single-family detached, and the other dealing with condominium townhouse-style development. Another aspect to this is ultimately what happens once you have a fee adopted, how do you adjust it? What we decided upon is an index that's based on a well-published construction index. We toyed around with certain provisions that might reflect market fluctuations, but we were concerned about the volatility of that, and we just decided to use the construction index. And then the fees would be paid at the time a building permit is issued for a specific dwelling unit. This program is intended to apply to developments of six units or more, so obviously, projects with five units or less are exempt. Projects that have a vesting map that's been approved at the time this ordinance is adopted would not be subject to these requirements. Projects that might occur in conjunction with a negotiated development agreement, and then it's also important to note that any rental units are not, so apartment buildings would not be subject to this program, or components of projects that are clearly for rental use and could not be sold. And then if you had units that were obviously destroyed by fire, earthquake, or whatever, they could be replaced without being subject to these requirements. Now, these following provisions actually only apply if someone were to decide to build units on-site, so if they pay a fee, these would not come into play. But we set forth requirements for an inclusionary housing plan, and that basically is a tool that allows staff to see that a project applicant is complying with the provisions of the program. That's submitted in two ways. The first is called the preliminary plan, that's submitted in conjunction with the application, and would need to be deemed complete before an application could be determined to be complete. And then there's another called the final, that would be submitted once an applicant has received approval, and when they submit for building permits. And the reason for that is if there have been any changes to the design of the project or conditioning as they go through the project, the final plan would need to reflect that. We also set forth certain standards. If you're going to provide units, they need to be of comparable exterior appearance and finishes to market rate units. We don't want to be able to differentiate those units. We also need to approve the location physically within the development, so that's at city discretion. And then the timing of it would be that they would need to be constructed at the same time that market rate units are coming online for a project. We also provide for certain incentives. We allow for a reduction in square footage for inclusionary units, so they're allowed to be up to 20% smaller than comparable market rate units in a development, and they can also use less expensive finishes and appointments. So for instance, if you have granite countertops in your market rate units, you're not obligated to put granite countertops in your, your affordable units, and we believe that's a way to make up some cost savings. And then any unit that's gotten through this program is required to be affordable for 45 years. The next program is the non-residential linkage fee program, and this is intended to institute a fee against certain types of commercial and office development, and it's applicable to any non-residential development that's subject to this article that contains 7,500 square feet or more, and we reached that threshold through discussions with our focus group. And again, it's intended to not penalize smaller projects unduly. That would apply to any new construction or additions that are greater than that square footage. It would also apply to what we call a change of use category, which I'll explain in a moment, and it would apply to any conversion of a residential use to a non-residential use of greater than 7,500 square feet. Projects that are exempt from this program is any project that's received its discretionary approval sufficient to allow it to be constructed before we adopt this ordinance, any public agency project that's constructed for public purposes, exterior alterations or improvements, again, the intent would be that you wouldn't want to levy fees when somebody's trying to upgrade the appearance of their building, structures destroyed by natural act, and then any non-residential development otherwise exempt by law, and that's kind of a catch-all exemption. If there's certain statutes that would prohibit us from regulating them, then this just allows us to exempt them from that fee requirement. Now, the non-residential use categories, this is kind of touching on the background information we provided you in April, so I guess I lied, and I am going to talk about that a little bit. This is broad land, or basically broad use categories that are established based on the analysis that we did of employment demand and income breakdown by broad types of use category. And so from that analysis, we wound up with five categories, retail, commercial, office, lodging, industrial, and research and development, and each of these were seen as having discrete characteristics. And the intent being that these are kind of broad umbrella categories that uses within our zoning ordinance and specific plans would allow to be placed under. And then sort of tangent to that, as I indicated, the zoning ordinance contains listings of specific uses as well as specific plans, so our intent would be to catalog those uses and assign them to each of these five categories. And as such, that would be adopted by resolution of city council at the time they adopt the fees, and so somebody coming in for development would know that if they are a specific type of use, they fall within that category, and they are subject to that dollar amount of fee. And hopefully, it alleviates any debate or confusion at the time people submit for discretionary permits. And then there are going to be some uses, as we begin to go through this exercise, that don't clearly fit within one of those five categories. And so there's a provision in that ordinance that allows the community development director to request specific information about a use, and that would then allow a case-by-case determination on those uses that either aren't listed or have not been categorized specifically based on the adopted resolution. The calculation of the fee is based on gross square footage, again, as part of the analysis we took into consideration areas such as corridors and bathrooms and closets and mechanical rooms. So when somebody comes in with a building, it's based on gross square footage, there's not an exercise about, well, we have so much of this and this type of area, and so much in another. Again, the intent being to kind of try and simplify the assessment of the fee, and that's paid at either building permit, or in the rare instance where no building permit is required, say for a change of use, then it would be payable at the time a certificate of occupancy is issued. Again, the adjustment of fees, once these things are adopted, is intended to occur probably on a biennial basis and would be adjusted using construction cost indexing. And the ordinance also allows for periodic reviews, just to see whether the base fees are, are in line with what market conditions are doing. The use of linkage fees is a little bit, slightly more restrictive than other fees that we'll be collecting through these programs, and the reason for that is that we need to show that it's providing a direct benefit to uses or developers or employers that have contributed to this program. The next article is, has its origins actually in state law, and this is basically a program that awards a certain degree of increased density in exchange for the inclusion of affordable housing within a development. And again, it has its origins in state law, which is section 65915, which was attached to your report, is attachment D. And the truth of the matter is that the state law pretty much dictates to cities what is included in the ordinance, and there's not a whole lot of discretion, so the percentage of units is dictated, the percent of affordable units that are required to qualify is dictated, the number of allowable incentives that a city has to grant are dictated. So we're not going to spend a lot of time talking about that, since there isn't a lot of discretion on your part. But the one area that there is some discretion is this notion of incentives. What the state law says is that in addition to the award of this increased number of units for affordable units, you're also awarded what's called an incentive or an exception, and the intent of that is to help defray costs for inclusion of the affordable units, and also to facilitate the increased density. And what we've done is broken that down into two categories. One is referred to as permitted incentives, and the second is pretty much anything else, incentives, concessions, modifications, and waivers. And so these are, the applicant requests these as part of any density bonus request. So the first category of permitted incentives, what we did was we worked with planning staff to come up with a laundry list of what we felt were suitable incentives, and if somebody selects from this list, basically, they are automatically entitled to it, unless you can make a finding that it's detrimental to a historic resource. And I'm going to just, I'm not going to talk specific numbers, but just kind of run through this. It's allowing for certain percentage reduction in setbacks, increases in, or I'm sorry, reduction in common open space, increase in lot coverage in RPD zones, reduction in private yard areas, reduction in separation between structures, and then the calculation of density based on gross lot area, it would exclude private street areas, thereby allowing a higher calculation of density. And then lastly, parking standards, and these standards are actually cited in state law, so basically, if somebody requests that, they are able to be granted those, and it's interesting to point out that they're allowed to be either unenclosed or in tandem. So if somebody requests that through the state law or our density bonus ordinance, assuming it gets adopted, they would be entitled to these requirements automatically. Now, the next set, what we call incentives, concessions, modifications, or waivers, is a much broader category, it's basically anything else. So state law says you can request incentives, and the city pretty much has to grant them, but the way we've structured this is to say, you know, you can request anything that you like that isn't in that permitted incentives category, however, if you do that, you need to submit a pro forma that shows us that there's a financial benefit in providing these incentives, modifications, waivers. And also, there are certain specific findings of fact that will have to be made to grant those, and those largely deal with the financial need and viability of those exceptions, but also have the general environmental and historic resource finding as well. And then just lastly, perfunctory, we require density bonus plan to demonstrate compliance with this. It would obviously need to show the requisite number of affordable units, where the additional units granted by density bonus are, and then set forth certain review procedures. Now, one thing to note about this, it differs from inclusionary housing in the sense that inclusionary housing plans don't actually come before the decision-making body, they're a tool for staff to gauge compliance. However, because this deals with incentives, it would be a companion to any discretionary applications that came before a decision-making body. And then just lastly, these are compliance procedures, so assuming that we were to get units through these programs, it just discusses how we would qualify people, what the method of restricting these units formally are. And then also, an important thing to note is it also contains the waiver and adjustment provision. So if somebody wants to ask for an alternative form of compliance to these standards, they could do so through those provisions, or if they felt that institution of these requirements constituted a takings claim, they could request a waiver through those requirements as well. So in conclusion, we believe that these programs are a good idea, they're going to complement some of the existing programs that we have. We think it's an important step towards providing another long-term source of funding. Our RDA funds, our redevelopment agency funds, have been our primary tool in funding affordable housing. Those project areas will be expiring, 30 years, still seems a long raise off, but we'll actually hit our revenue caps in 10 to 12 years, so that's a major source of funding that's going to go away relatively quickly in the scheme of things. And then it'll help us with meeting our regional housing needs through housing production or additional funding sources. So lastly, what we're recommending is that you recommend to the city council that they adopt the negative declaration that was provided to you, and that they adopt the four municipal code amendments that are combined into the Affordable Housing Ordinance. And then I'd just like to point out to you that those programs were initiated separately, so it is within the commission's purview that if you felt you were in favor of some and not others, you could make separate recommendations. We've brought them forth as a single unit, but you do have that within your purview. And also, if you have suggestions on parameters or thresholds that you feel should be changed or broadened or narrowed, you're certainly within your purview to do that. So that concludes my presentation, and I would be happy to answer any questions. I would like to note, however, there was one letter received, and that was from Los Raúl Leys Hospital, that was included in your packet of material, along with a staff response, so I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hatcher. Questions? Commissioner Fisher?
Good evening, Mr. Hatcher.
Good evening.
One question for you. You mentioned rental, let's say we had an apartment complex go up, they're exempt from paying these fees?
That is correct.
Maybe this is a question for the city attorney, seems like if our focus is affordable housing, you know, let's say we have a 200-unit apartment complex that goes up, why not have a certain percentage as, you know, low-income rental units, you know, a lower-than-market type, I guess, rent?
Well, I can answer that, actually, or attempt to. The reason for that is, when we did the analysis, part of it was based on financial viability, and given the market conditions at the time the analysis was conducted, the constructing apartments didn't even pencil if they were all market rate. And so they didn't, they didn't turn a profit for the developer. So if we were to institute a requirement for restricted rents when they're not even making a profit anyway, then that would make them even less affordable. Now, the one thing to note, your point is well-taken, that rentals do serve an important role in providing affordable housing, but the thought being that the fee But the thought being that the fees, because the ordinance is set up such that it would allow for voluntary payment of in-lu fees, those fees could then be used, say, to leverage other funding sources to acquire, say, rental units. But at the time we did this analysis and are drafting this ordinance, the market just wasn't supporting rental units. And then I'd also like to point out that the ordinance does have a provision that allows for reanalysis at a later date to see whether market conditions have changed sufficiently to institute a fee on rental units as well.
Okay, so that, should the market change, that would be considered at that time?
If we were directed to go back and reanalyze it, we certainly could do that if council directed us to do so. And then if it turned out that market conditions had changed and a fee was supportable, we could institute that fee.
And that would be for any new development at that time?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
Thank you, thank you. Hi, Mr. Fisher, Mr. Hatcher.
Hello.
There's Mr. Fisher down there. How are you this evening? I just have a couple of questions and maybe some clarifications you could help me with here. Does the city have any preference when it comes to actually building the affordable housing versus the project paying in-lu fees? Or do they just?
Well, that's a good question. I think it's not a simple, one way or another answer, and I'll explain why. If we get the units built, they're targeted to moderate income category. So you're serving a certain need through the construction of units. If we collect a fee, there's a broader array of uses that that fee could be put towards in terms of income levels and project types. Now, if we institute a fee, does it completely offset the cost of producing a unit? And the answer is no. So it's not a simple, it's a little bit of apple-orange.
I see, yeah. Well, I mean, that's interesting, the juxtaposition between the two. In your experience or what you've known anecdotally from other cities, how many builders actually build the affordable housing versus pay the in-lu fees?
Well, where, there's certain cities that actually have a mandatory requirement, where you have to build those units. And again, we did not opt for that version because of the financial viability aspect when we were looking at the different project prototypes, because we didn't think it would be equitable to say certain types of residential unit types would provide units onsite and others would pay a fee. So we made it elective. Where cities have fees, it depends on the fee amount. Certain cities have fairly substantial fees. And in those cases, sometimes a developer might opt to build units. In most instances, you're likely going to see the payment of the fee. But it can also be because if you're providing units onsite, there's certain administrative complications that go along with that. You're going to have to qualify households for purchase, you know, you're going to have to market those units in a slightly different way. And so there is a little bit more ease of paying a fee.
Pros and cons, both ways.
Right.
Yeah. Well, I could see if the city were collecting fees, I mean, we could, rather than having affordable housing scattered throughout the city, we can maybe concentrate in certain areas and service the need a little bit better. And speaking of the fees, I wanted to ask you, so you're going to index these fees. Will both the in-lu and the linkage fees be indexed?
That is correct.
And you're going to use the McGraw-Hill Construction Index?
It's the, yeah, the Engineering News Record. It's a, it's a trade publication that comes out, and it has a Los Angeles-area construction cost index. And so we use something like that as opposed to, say, a consumer price, because it's more reflective of construction and market conditions.
The reason I bring it up, I know from the reading, there was discussion about it as to, you know, how to fairly index these fees. And I noticed that there's actually two indexes. One's based more on the commodity side, the price of steel, cement, et cetera, and the other's based more on the labor side. And I'm sure the commodity side, considering what's been happening in the world lately, has skyrocketed lately. Are you going to pick one of the two, or is there another one, index that I'm not aware of?
Well, that's a good question. And I don't know that we had looked at it that finely. I might defer. Simon, do you want to ask?
Well, I think it said in the, in the notes that you reserved the right to kind of look at this index a little closer, but I would just bring that to your attention, that I do believe there's, there's two. And as I said, one is based on the labor side, one's based on the commodities. Somebody might want to take a look at which one would be most appropriate.
That's a good point.
I do think it's a good idea to keep the linkage fees separate, because you do want to benefit the employers that contributed the fees, without question. Who is it, will it be the city council that decides how those linkage fees are spent?
That is correct.
Okay. That's what I assume, but I just wanted to ask. This is, this is probably an obvious question, but you get a density bonus, you can build extra units. I presume those extra units would be at market rate?
That is correct.
They wouldn't be more affordable units, right? They're going to be more?
Right, because the thinking is that they help amortize the cost of the affordable units that are provided.
All right, that's what I thought. And the list of permitted incentives that you include, these have been pretty much mandated by the state of California, have they not?
Well, the permitted incentives are things that we came up with in-house, working with planning staff, what we felt were suitable incentives to grant to a developer to help them facilitate the additional density and cost. So no, those, like setback standards, I mean, there's reference, but those specific standards and percentages were something that we arrived at internally.
The parking standards, however, are mandated by state. Those are ones that we took directly from state law as opposed to the other ones.
Well, what wasn't clear to me about the incentives, if, in the reading, that you presented a chart, that depending on how much affordability the builder provided, he could get up to one, two, or three incentives?
Correct.
But then at the same time, it said, and maybe I'm just reading this wrong, up to three incentives, but then it went on to say on page 33, "Any applicant requesting a density bonus shall be entitled to the following incentives." And there's, you know, seven or, wait a minute, how many are there?
I believe there's nine.
No. So is the, okay, so my question is, is the builder entitled to all nine, or just three of them?
No, it's intended to be a laundry list. And so perhaps we should look at whether that is misleading and how it's worded. But the intent is that you have these nine standards, and as the city attorney correctly stated, we came up with eight of them. The ninth, the parking, was dictated by state law. So depending on the percentage of affordable units you give us, you can go through and say, "I want one, two, three," or "I'm entitled to one." But no.
And actually, what it says is that, it says that they, they get the following incentives subject to the provisions of Section 9-10, 503A.
Oh, backwards.
503A is the one that sends you back and basically says you get the number, percent, a number of incentives based on the percentage of affordable units.
I see. Okay, so it refers you back to where it says you can get three. Okay, I got it. All right, that was just a little unclear to me. I don't know, maybe we'd want to say you get three incentives, but I guess it serves the same purpose. So, okay, I understand. You don't get them all, in other words. Pick three. It's like a menu.
Or one, depending on.
Well, right, right. Pick one, two, or three.
Right.
Yeah, I just want to ask a couple of questions about the hospital. If you, in the letter for the hospital, they asked that perhaps if the linkage fee were to be applied to them, that there'd be a waiver to that fee whereby they might provide affordable housing themselves. So just so I understand, is that waiver on page 41, it mentioned the waiver? And I think, is that where you say a developer may also request that the requirements of this chapter be satisfied to the developer in another manner which would result in reasonably comparable compliance with this chapter?
That's correct.
That's that waiver. So that would give them the ability to say, "Well, we don't want to pay linkage fees, but we would build such and such."
That's correct.
Okay, all right. And so how, this, getting back to the hospital, how would the staff then propose to categorize the hospital? Because that seems to be one of their questions, you know, as far as assessing the linkage fees, because it doesn't quite seem to fit in.
Right. Well, I think in our preliminary cataloging of ordinance uses, what we arrived at was that conclusion that the hospital wasn't easily categorized.
Other.
Yes, and we do have a category that we're looking at called "other." And that refers back to that provision that says if you're not designated use or listed, you're going to submit information that allows the community development director to make a determination. Now, I mean, just as a hypothetical example, I, you know, I'm not an expert on hospital development, but, you know, they may develop different phases. And there may be one phase that's maybe more like a medical office complex. And in that case, it might make sense to deem it an office category. There may be another that's more of a, I guess the addition they just did was more of a conventional hospital. So I'm not sure, you know, what the employment demand data is for something like that. We would need to look at it and see what category made sense to place it in.
So the key then, from what I hear you saying, would be the community developer director would have that latitude then to categorize?
Yes, based on more specific information requested of the applicant that would allow us to make that determination.
All right. And just one more line of thought here. Of course, with this, the density bonus allows density to increase over otherwise allowable maximum residential density established by zone and general plan.
Correct.
And that, I take it is mandated by the state. But here in Thousand Oaks, of course, we have Measure E.
Correct.
Which says that it would go to a vote of the people if density exceeds the general plan.
Well, but it's based on the institution of the general plan amendment that increases density. And this says that you are entitled to density above and beyond the maximum permitted by the zoning ordinance and general plan land use designation. So there would be no institution of a general plan amendment to facilitate density bonus, and therefore, it would not be subject to the provisions of Measure E.
Can you give, give me some clarification on that, Councilman Nunez? I'm not sure I see the.
What do you need information on? I agree with what Mr. Hatcher said. Basically, Measure E applies if an applicant is applying for a general plan amendment. And that would be to change, you know, the general plan from either low density to medium density or to high density, or residential to commercial. In this case, we would not be processing a general plan amendment. In fact, what it results in is that it's a state finding that the project is still consistent with the general plan, notwithstanding the fact that there's additional units. So there's no general plan amendment that would be involved in these types of projects.
I see. So the state is saying, even though you give this density bonus, it remains consistent with the general plan?
It's, that's the legislative intent. That's the legislative intent of that mandate.
I understand. Well, let me ask you just one question, and maybe I read this wrong, or it doesn't apply exactly, but on the last page, I'll find it here. Oh, it's on page 96. And this may just apply to one thing, or may apply to the whole section. The very last thing, it says, gee, this section should not apply to a voter-approved ordinance adopted by referendum or initiative. It's part of the WAIS document from the state. Is that saying that, is that referring to the whole section, or just this one portion about the childcare? See that on page 96?
Yeah, I'm looking at it right now.
It's G.
Well, it says section, so without looking at the whole thing, it looks like it applies just to that section, because this is a chapter. The density bonus program under the state law is a chapter. And so you'll notice throughout the statute, it references the chapter as opposed to a section. But I can look at it more while you're asking your additional questions, if you want.
Okay, I see, all right, the difference between a section and a chapter, so this must be applied to the childcare portion.
Right, this is really a section.
All right, because it caught my eye there. You know, "shall not apply to a voter-approved ordinance adopted by referendum initiative," which could, you know, pull in Measure A, but, okay.
Again, even if it, even, again, Measure E, when you look at the language of Measure E, Measure E applies to general plan amendments, and there would be no general plan amendment that would be required under this type of a scenario.
I see the differentiation, okay.
If I could just add a comment as well. On page 89 of your packet, at the bottom, there's a portion affirming the density bonus that states that the granting of a density bonus shall not be interpreted in and of itself to require a general plan amendment, local coastal plan amendment, zoning change or other discretionary approval. So that's another point in the actual density bonus law at the state level that addresses that point.
I understand, general plan amendment versus the state basically saying that increase in the densities is within the general plan. So it's kind of, one trumps the other in a sense. Okay, got it. All right, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Hatcher.
Thank you. Commissioner Grumney?
Hi, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Okay. I'm, I was looking at the executive summary, and within it, it had an analysis that suggested that the in-lu fee would produce somewhere between 8.8 million to 13.7 million throughout the build-out of the city. Was any analysis given to looking at if, we took an example of just last year, and how much money that might have produced? So that's the first part of my question. And where I'm kind of going, and what I'm curious about, is that with the amount of money that it would generate, will this serve to meet the requirements of the state of California for affordable housing? I mean, are we getting to something that's going to help in that direction?
We did look at a single-year analysis on fee generation, and I think what we arrived at was that there was a generation of about, I want to say, 1.6 million in fees. But the reason for that was there was a lot of office square footage that was coming online with the one project, I forget the name of it, here on the, on the ocean side, the freeway there. And so we didn't put a lot of stock in that, showing us what it would actually generate over time. I would like to point out that the generation numbers that you have there in the executive summary were actually kind of lowballed, because what we did was, without getting into the specifics of fees at this time, there's this bifurcated structure of fees. And there's a lower fee for single-family dwellings and a slightly higher fee for condominium townhouse. So we took the lowest fee when we did that generation estimate. So when we relooked at it with this sort of bifurcated fee, we came up with fee generation rates of somewhere between 20 and 32 million for the inclusionary over the life of existing development. And it should be pointed out that, you know, over time, because again, we're looking at this as a, as a very long-term approach to providing affordable housing funding, you're likely going to see cycles of land use. Now, can we predict what those are? No. But, you know, we're going to have some adjustment for the current regional housing needs assignment, and who knows what will happen in the next cycle. And so those estimates may, may change over time. And then when you couple that with the, the fee amounts that are projected for the, for the linkage fee, you come up, and actually, I have that somewhere, if you bear with me. What you come up with, though, is that you do have, the linkage fee was 8.4 to 10 million. So you couple that with the inclusionary estimates, and we're talking somewhere between 28 and 44 million over the life of current build-out scenarios. Now, does that go all the way to meeting our affordable housing needs? No, it does not. But again, I think the importance of this is that we've relied heavily on redevelopment agency funding over time, and within the next 10 or 12 years, that source is going to go away. And so what that means is that this could prove an important way of repl- And so what that means is that this could prove an important way of replacing that funding source while it's augmenting it in the meantime.
And though I know you can't do this exactly, but I'm just kind of curious to know whether or not any of your analysis had led you to find that we'll get 50% of the way, will we get 10% of the way? Any analysis on that?
Oh, in terms of meeting our housing...
Yeah, trying to understand what this is actually going to produce in the end, and in terms of affordable housing. What is it going to produce? And, because I'm sure that when the citizens read of this, I think the assumption is going to be that, oh, my gosh, we've really attacked the affordable housing problem.
Right.
But in fact, maybe, you know, that's not, you know, correct. That's not getting us all the way there. So I'm just trying to understand any analysis that was given to what, you know, looking at maybe just last year, what that might produce in terms of affordable housing for our community.
Well, I guess one way to look at it, because I can't give you a straightforward answer, I wish I could, but we projected at the time of the analysis that the cost to construction of affordable housing unit was somewhere on the order of $400,000. Okay? So if we look at these fee generation rates, and you can, you have to remember when you're talking, the fees that we collect, we usually leverage them. So we may give money to a developer who in turn then will apply for tax credits, will apply for bond financing. And I think a reasonable ratio is probably six to one. So if you take these numbers and say, okay, we're generating this through our programs, if you multiply it by six, okay, then we're talking, my math isn't so good anymore, but say, six times 28 is 168 million instead of 28 million, and then if you apply a cost of about 400,000, you know, that's roughly two and a half units per million dollars. So, you know, that's, say, 350. That's a very, I mean, that's back envelope, and that's at the low end of these projections, so.
And I have one, just one last question in regards to the fees. Is it ever at the discretion of the planning commissioner, city council, to waive a fee? So let's just say there's a project for which I haven't thought of right now that might come before us, that we might choose to be able to offer them to waive their fees? Is that ever a possibility?
Well, for the planning commission, the answer is no. For the city council, there's the waiver provisions, right, that, but they have to be very specifically based upon constitutional taking or this comparable means of compliance. Because again, the intent is that you want to have a program that's fixed, that doesn't have discretion, that allows the fees to be considered at every juncture, so.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Hatcher, I just have one question. I'm curious about the hospital that staff will call it as belonging in the other category, as on page 12 in the report. But on page seven, in the list of the five non-residential use category, and in the ordinance on page 28, there's no other category, and why not?
Well, the reason for that is that we're talking about kind of two things. The ordinance provides for these five broad land use, or we don't call them land use for fear of confusing it with general plan designation, these non-residential use categories, which is commercial, retail, office, lodging, industrial, and research and development. What we've done in the next step is we said, okay, how do we take every use that we have in our zoning ordinance and specific plan and apply them to those five categories? So in doing that, what we did, there are clearly some that are clearly in one or the other. And then there's some where it's kind of a question, but after some further analysis, you can make a determination. And then there's things like the hospital, or in other instances, private schools. They don't clearly fit within one of those five categories. And so what we've decided to do is to put a category of other. And what that tells us is if they come in for a development request, we're going to need more information before we can address making a determination on which of those five categories they fall under. And that was intended to be addressed through that provision that says you're either a catalogued use, or you're a use that hasn't been determined as a category or is not listed.
Okay, so you just don't want the other category in there, because you want to specifically define, let's say, the hospital as one particular category? Okay.
Those five categories were the basis of an analysis that we did that is intended to be kind of broad categories based on employment demand and the income levels of employees of those categories. And so this other is things that are kind of an anomaly, I guess you could say, that don't clearly fit in there. But the intent wasn't that you'd have an other category in the ordinance, because those categories are intended to have assigned fees against them, and you can't assign a fee against the other category, because what that's telling us is we need more information before we can assign it to a category, if that makes sense.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
And it's not just hospital that would fall into that. I mean, staff tries to, you know, go through all the existing uses, but, you know, times will change, and there'll be new uses that will come along that don't really fit in any particular category. We need to have some type of mechanism that as different or unique or new types of businesses come into the city, that staff has the flexibility to try to figure out what the fee should be set in and how to categorize them. So that's why they created this other category for the hospital and possibly other uses as well.
Yeah, Commissioner Adam, you have another question?
Just a quick question on the fees. Maybe this is for Council Noonan. We won't be voting on actual fee amounts tonight, will we?
That's correct. This is typical with other fees that the city sets. It's always city council driven.
Thank you.
Okay, if there are no further comments or questions of staff, then I'll go on to the cards. The first card is Douglas Tapking. If you come forward and state your name and city residence, and because you are from representing a group, you will have 15 minutes.
My name is Douglas Tapking. I'm the executive director for the Area Housing Authority, County of Ventura. I hope you're not going to hold me to speaking for 15 minutes. I come from a time which is usually three. I come tonight to speak in support of this. I am part of the Housing Subcommittee that spent thousands of hours on this. And before you tonight, you see the results of those thousands and thousands of hours of work. The ordinance is, these number of ordinances that are put together for you tonight are a culmination of the result of several years of work, roughly 2003 through 2008. Many of us in the affordable housing community are looking forward to seeing these types of results come forward. Several questions were asked tonight as to how the affordability will be calculated, or where it's going to be used, or what the leverage ratios are. All of those are, well, gee whiz, I don't know until the actual funding comes down and how much money is available. Being one of the providers for this particular city, what I can stress to you is, the funding from this program is dramatically needed. This ordinance is long overdue. We would love to see the linkage fees go into place, the housing trust fund be funded, because it makes a difference on how we are able to acquire or to fund projects. We see leverage rates of probably three or four to one. We're talking six to one tonight. We hope we can reach that on a regular basis. The last project that I funded was 13 layers of financing, $45 million. At that particular point, by the time the financing was all done, we were talking $56 million to purchase, not to build. We are currently in the process of attempting to fund 60 units in the City of Thousand Oaks that will be affordable. This program will be key. When we look at things like density bonuses, that density bonus will all be affordable, 100%. That's what we do. Those are the types of things that are important here. BAE has done a great job in putting together the number of meetings that we've all participated in from the participatory function of having citizens look at this. You have residential, commercial, trust fund, inclusionary issues all incorporated on here. It's not a perfect set of ordinances, are? None of them are. But it is a wonderful, solid basis to move forward for the next number of years. This creates a type of fund and situation that is cumulative. As your RDA funds go away, this will be replacement. Our partners, Many Mansions and other developers in the City of Thousand Oaks who do affordable, both very low income and moderate income, were key participants, along with a solid group of citizens, to bring this forward to you at this particular point. I cannot stress strongly enough to you tonight, my urging you to recommend for approval to the city council, this group of ordinances tonight. If you have specific questions, I will be available to answer them at any time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tapking. Any questions? Thank you. Next speaker is Mr. Rick Schroeder. You come forward, state your name and city residence, and you also have 15 minutes.
Madam Chairperson, members of the planning commission, my name is Rick Schroeder. I'm the executive director for Many Mansions. My city of residence is Oak Park, though, but Many Mansions is located here in Thousand Oaks. Along with Mr. Tapking, we were both co-chairperson of the ad hoc affordable housing subcommittee that met beginning in 2003. This is when we started this process, and we both participated in the recent task force with respect to these ordinances. As Mr. Tapking mentioned, we went around and around and really struggled with some of these ordinances, especially the inclusionary housing ordinance. But we finally came out in favor of these, and I'm standing here before you tonight to say that Many Mansions supports these recommendations. And we do it for three basic reasons. First, it does help address the need for affordable housing in this Thousand Oaks community. And two, it strengthens the nonprofit developer, along with the Area Housing Authority, in creating affordable housing, yet at the same time recognizes, I think, the unique role that a private developer has in developing more affordable housing for the moderate-income household. And third, we believe that the recommendations are fair. We need more affordable housing in the City of Thousand Oaks. I can't stress that enough. We don't think that these provisions will add a significant dent to that, but it will help. Our Many Mansions waiting list has over 800 households needing housing. 800 households that approximately 90% are classified as very low income, and 50% are classified as those that are homeless or disabled, or homeless and disabled. The recommendations here, especially the housing trust fund and the money that will go into the housing trust fund, will help create more affordable housing for those very low and low-income households. At the same time, it does recognize the unique role that Many Mansions and other nonprofits and the Area Housing Authority play. As has been mentioned throughout, we can leverage the money that's created in this housing trust fund. The leverage rate is probably not six to one, closer to four to one or three to one, but we do use that money in obtaining money from the state and federal government. It provides the needed gap financing. For example, our Oceana Day for lease development, where we developed 25 units of new construction, rental affordable housing. That was an $8 million project. We were able to secure financing from state and federal sources of approximately 7.4 million, but we needed that extra $600,000 to make the project go. And that's where the redevelopment agency stepped in, that's where we got the financing, and as a result, we were able to go through the project, and that's why we have 24, 25 units of new affordable housing. And the type of housing that we create, and that we would be able to create, is not just the for-sale housing or the housing that would be created by a private developer. It's rental housing. I think that's the best type of affordable housing for the city. It's housing that's service-enriched, where are a variety of service programs for the children and the disabled adults. It's housing that's safe and it's decent. So it's better type of housing. So we strongly support the housing trust fund. This gives the city much more flexibility than just use of the tax increment financing. And I think over time, will respond to the community's needs more. More transitional housing could be developed through it, emergency shelter housing, really whatever the community needs, and it gives the city that ability to direct that type of money. We support the inclusionary housing policy. Again, one of the important components is that it actually codifies what had been somewhat of an unwritten policy by the city, that is to create, to require private developers creating their affordable units or pay a fee. But this codifies that, and we think it's better, because it allows all the developers in the world to see exactly what the city's policy is, and then they can make their own calculations from that. And we think over time, that will actually create more housing, it will be more fair, and I think it'll be better for the city. But the rates, it's not over burdensome. Our committee went around and around on what type of inclusionary policy. We came down by favoring that it applies, or that the developer has to create moderate units, not low-income units or very low-income units. We felt that was too burdensome and too much of a cost the developer had to bear. At the same time, though, we do favor the in-lu fees, again, for the same reasons I had stated before. We feel that those fees paid by the developer, put into housing trust fund, gives the city much more flexibility and allows them to, and allows others to develop and leverage that money in a much better way. We do favor the linkage fee ordinance. Again, we feel that's fair, not over burdensome, and yet addresses the need for more affordable housing that will, in fact, be created through more commercial development. And lastly, we do favor the density bonus recommendations. As Mr. Hatcher mentioned, this largely tracks what state law already requires, but it provides the specificity by giving the developers, again, upfront the knowledge as to what types of, what types of concessions that they can expect if they in fact go forward and develop these low-income units. So in summary, we support the recommendations. Many Mansions support the recommendations, and we would encourage you to do that as well. And I'm also available for any questions. Thank you.
Are there any questions, Mr. Schroeder? Thank you very much. The next speaker is Nick Eckball-Kidway. Would you come forward and state your name and city residence, and you also have 15 minutes?
Resident number three, speaker number three, Director of Concerned Citizens, House of Oaks, Honorable Chair Darrell Reynolds. I too will not need 15 minutes. I do appreciate your gesture, however. I'm not happy, but doesn't mean that I should be crying or not speaking. Not be happy, because there's not a single resident to speak on this issue which affects everybody. And after spending 15 years in this community, trying to get more citizens involved, I have failed in my duty. Why is there no one here from any of the low-income housing units speaking? Because they have the direct experience. That's because I'm speaker number three, because they know that's just a sheer waste of time to, because the decisions have already been made. There is no input that is really appreciated of residents. I am also disappointed that the meeting started with the staff member saying that he's going to try to be brief. I mean, why be brief? I mean, this is the only thing that's on the agenda. And I used to come to this meeting and talk with the planning commissioners at 3:00 in the morning, when the meeting was finished, in the parking lot. Now I have talked to commissioners at 8:00 in the evening, in the parking lot. I mean, that's, I mean, and even then, the level of the questioning is disappointing in the sense that as far as this resident is concerned, the staff report does not address many of the issues. And for the record, I mean, I was a member of the low and moderate income housing when there was Mayor Lazarin, Xena, et cetera, for a couple of years. there was Mayor Lazarin, Xena, et cetera, for a couple of years, or if not longer. All the discussion seems to be about new projects, construction. That's what the fees in lieu are also, I guess, when the problem is much more multi-pronged. In fact, your starting page on the report, no, it's not on the report, but the Affordable Housing Program on the website shows ownership programs, rental assistance program, housing rehab program, owner occupancy programs, et cetera. I was going to bring today's Star, but I'm sure you all have it at home. There's four pages. I mean, I was going to open the two pages full of NODs, N O, Commissioner Grumney knows that, being in the business, notices of default. I mean, these are good, hard-working Thousand Oaks people that are unable to pay their mortgages, and some of them are going to become homeless or seek low- and moderate-income housing. And I don't see anything being done here to address it. I know it's a national problem. I know both Republican, Democratic parties, et cetera, are doing it. But I mean, right now, you, with nothing on the agenda, have the opportunity to discuss this and try to come up with some suggestions. One of the things that has really bothered me over the years about our city's low-income program is that everybody is asked to give sacrifices except the city. As far as I know, and I am ready to be corrected, in the sense that all the fees, and they are approximately $20,000 per unit, the city collects everything. So the city still has the incentive to build a low-income or a market-rate unit. And if you really want to help the people and bring the cost of housing down, and if you really truly believe in that, you should not charge those fees. And, you know, I don't believe in the tooth fairy, but the, the city really never has had any problem with, with funds, even in this bad economy right now. And one of the reasons that the city is in this business, whether the city fathers and even planning commissioners like it or not, is because you have one of the biggest redevelopment agency programs for a city of this size, and by state law, 20% of that money has to go to low- and moderate-income housing. And so, and the, and the caveat there is that it can only go to capital projects. It cannot be spent on rental assistance. It cannot be spent on other needs. So that's why, like I said, I feel like crying because I don't really see any solutions. I have young children that are being forced to move out of the community. This program of the cities, I mean Camelot and these housing programs where the city is the partner, I mean, it doesn't make any sense where the only benefit that I see for buying there is that you, instead of making rental payments, you're making mortgage payments, and those are tax-deductible. But when you go to sell, all the equity is kept by the city. I mean, so I mean, I mean, that's why my oldest son finally got fed up and bought a bank-owned condo in Ventura. And we looked at these things, and he said, Dad, what's the sense of buying these things? I said, you tell me. And so he bought a bank-owned, and it's a lousy piece of property. Hopefully, it will work out. I gave the staff a report, and there's a story on Staples Center, which was in the LA Times, and I hope you will read that. The story that is more germane was, I think, on page one on June 21st in the Star, about 2,000 bank-owned homes in the county, and how people are looking at converting those into housing. And these are the kind of out-of-the-box ideas that I thought that a long meeting would, would talk about rather than just dwell into the staff report and just beat it to death. I mean, they ain't anything spectacular or complex about, about that. Regarding exceptions to the fees for one industry versus the others, I mean, I think you should really not have any fees. I mean, well, you say, well, how do we do this? I mean, who have it, I mean, you already get, I don't know, the staff can probably enlighten us as to how much you get from, from the redevelopment agency funds, and it's going to keep growing. That is more funds than many small cities' budgets. It's something like $5 million, I think. In closing, I would just like to say, thank the chair for giving me the time, and I would just like to say that as one who spoke in favor of the stole house and got in trouble with a lot of citizens for allowing such kind of a house to be built with taxpayer funds in the city, which would create all kind of vagrancy and other problems, that it has turned out to be an example for other communities. And the letter by Annette Beneventi, it's on Many Mansions website, I thought it was on your website. You should really go on manymansions.org and read this letter. It really makes one feel great that we have some of the good things going on. I remember I spoke in favor of the HUD housing on the Fury Gardens, and I was in a citizens' forum, and some people came up to me and said, Mr. Kidway, we love you, you are always on the right thing. But I'm from Chicago, and you don't know what HUD housing is, and you should not speak about things that you don't know about, et cetera. And I'm proud when I take this residents from out of the country and I show them, drive them around, and I show them the HUD housing, which is just really a great example of good housing. The problem is, I mean, one of the best programs that we have and which was mentioned is Section 8. I mean, you get the greatest bang for a small amount of bucks, but the federal government has reduced that. So if these kind of programs, if, if the city can, can do those and they are involved rolling funds, it's not just one-time building, and I know it's not an easy job for the Planning Commissioners. I wish you luck. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final card is Mr. Jonathan Burke. If you come forward, state your name and city residence, and you also have 15 minutes.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Burke, and I live in Agoura Hills, but I'm here on behalf of Los Robles Hospital Medical Center, which is located at 215 West Janes Road, Thousand Oaks, California. I'm the Labor Relations Director there, and I'm here tonight with my colleague, Chris Caraway, Vice President of Public Relations. Thank you for the opportunity of coming before you tonight and expressing the hospital's concerns as they relate to the draft Affordable Housing Ordinance before you this evening. In my capacity as the hospital's representative, I was privileged to participate in the city's non-residential linkage fee focus group. And as one of the largest employers located in Thousand Oaks, the hospital appreciates that many of our employees are challenged when it comes to seeking local affordable housing. In its memorandum presented for your consideration tonight, the staff have appended as attachment A a letter, it was dated May 27, 2008, from Mr. Jim Sherman, the hospital's CEO and president. I believe it's the last two pages of the memorandum. As noted in Mr. Sherman's letter and the staff's memorandum, the hospital is seeking an exemption from the linkage fees. If an exemption from the linkage fees is not possible, the hospital is voicing its support for the waiver or an opt-out provision that would comply with the ordinance's requirements by permitting the hospital to provide housing for some of its employees. And I'd like to explain to you why this is important to us. Los Robles believes that the linkage fee may adversely impact future decisions regarding hospital-related construction, and therefore, we continue to seek an exemption from the ordinance. But if we can't obtain an exemption, we'd like to have the opt-out provision, or waiver as it's called here in the ordinance. So tonight, I'd like to focus for a little bit on the opt-out provision and give you a little background information on why we're interested in this. During the focus group meetings, we discussed that it was highly desirable to have certain groups of employees, such as nurses and firefighters, living in Thousand Oaks so they could more easily assist in emergency situations. We also discussed the possibility of using the linkage fee program to help provide housing to such employees. And as you know, California faces a critical shortage of registered nurses. Despite the fact that we offer sign-on bonuses, loan forgiveness programs, and competitive wages, many new nursing grads cannot afford to live in our community. Additionally, the hospital already pays for housing for travelers, and in the past, we've paid for our inns, housing recruited from overseas, such as those from the Philippines. But in addition to our nurses, we also rely on a wide variety of occupations, including technicians, aides, and housekeepers, in order to be able to provide and to support safe patient care. And of course, the hospital agrees with the proposition that it is highly desirable that a proportion of our employees live in the local community. However, we also believe that the hospital itself is in the best position to determine its staffing needs, which is why we respectfully support an opt-out provision in this ordinance. This is how we propose an opt-out provision would work. Under an opt-out provision, an employer would have the option of complying with the ordinance by either subsidizing leased housing or constructing housing for its employees according to a predetermined formula. Such an opt-out provision is important to the hospital because it would enable us to comply with the ordinance in a way that supports our efforts to deliver safe patient care to our community. It would also help us to target specific employee groups while striking a balance between staffing needs and the employees' abilities to afford local housing. The hospital proposes to forward some specific language to clarify the waiver as an opt-out provision to the Planning Commission and to staff for its consideration and inclusion as part of the pending ordinance. In closing, I'd like to again thank the commission for the opportunity to come before you tonight and for your attention to the hospital's proposal.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Mr. Burke? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And at this time, we'll go back to staff if you have any comments.
I don't have any, but I would negligent in not introducing our consultant, Simon Alejandrino, who's patiently sat through this hearing and took the trouble to come down from the Bay Area, and he's been very instrumental in all of the analytics that led up to this.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioner Adams?
Hi, just one question from Mr. Hatcher. The opt-out provision that Mr. Burke just described, where the hospital could have the ability to either subsidize or construct affordable housing, would you say that that's addressed on this page, 41 sentence that we talked about earlier? Developer may also request the requirements, and this chapter be satisfied the developer in another manner, which would result in reasonably comparable compliance with this chapter?
The short answer is yes, because it does provide the option to propose that. I think I was a little bit reticent about entertaining specific language on a specific instance, because the intent of the provision would be that it would allow specific applicants to make requests on a case-by-case basis.
All right, okay. The key words I heard you say that would be, gives you the option to propose.
Correct.
So that's, that's out there, that's open.
That's correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. I'll close the public hearing at this time. Commissioner Len?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. And I'll try to be brief in spite of maybe some comments from one of our speakers. None of us control the agenda, nor do we control the speakers, obviously, but I just want to make a comment here from, from my seat. There's a heck of a lot of work that's been done on this project. A tremendous job has been done by city staff, those of you that are here tonight, those of you that are not here, those of you that are on the dais, those that are maybe at home watching, hopefully, they have a life and they aren't watching this thing. But I appreciate very much your presentation tonight in a manner that was understandable, at least to myself, who is not an expert in this, and that you are. And, you know, I'm a little dismayed. All of us sit here as citizens, we're volunteers, this is the second time that we've seen this, and I, from on a personal level, I regret the, the comments directed at your staff. And on behalf of the speaker tonight, I want to apologize to you for having you hear that. This, as I stated before, was very well done, very understandable, and with that, in the, in the order of brevity, I would recommend to move to the city council to adopt the negative declaration of Municipal Code Amendments 2007, 707, 27, 28, 29, and 30, including the draft ordinance as written in the staff report noted as attachment A.
Comments, motion? Commissioner Adams?
Thank you. Yeah, I will support the motion. I do think that the hospital does have the ability for the opt-out clause to make the proposals in, as an alternative to the linkage fees, but I don't think hospitals should be excluded from that. Affordable housing has been a buzzword in Thousand Oaks for as long as I've lived here, and I'm hoping that this ordinance will get us a little closer to changing it from a buzzword to a reality. Parents, you yourself, Mr. Kidway, parents want their kids to live in Thousand Oaks, and this, well, this can't do anything but help. We need first responders to live in Thousand Oaks. We need police, we need firefighters, we need healthcare workers, we need nurses to live in Thousand Oaks, we need teachers, we need educators, and I think this can do nothing but help. And I also like the way this supports smart growth. We don't want to see our people having to drive in from Ventura and from San Bernardino or wherever to work here. Smart growth says you need to live here in town. You would create less traffic, less oil dependency. It's better for the environment, less pressure on to sprawl outwards, less pressure to break those buffers that Ventura County is so lucky to have between its cities. So this will, in its own way, help with smart growth, so I'm enthusiastically supporting the Commissioner Len's motion.
Any other comments? Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I too will support the motion and echo Commissioner Len's comments. Staff did a great job. Took me a couple times to get through it, but with your presentation tonight was great. I do think the hospital has some movement with the opt-out clause, so I like to, I like how that's built in there. I think there's some room for negotiation, but this ordinance is certainly a long time coming in our community.
Commissioner Grumney?
I too am going to support the motion, and I wanted to thank Mr. Tapking and Mr. Schroeder for your participation in bringing this forward for us. The measure of how great a community is, is a community that's willing to do for those citizens that are in most of need. And so, as we move forward, I hope there'll be more things that'll be able to help them. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also will support the motion. I wish that the hospital had talked more about the waiver and the opt-out provision in the ordinance, but I think that we need to look at housing not just for the firefighters and the nurses. There's an awful lot of people that are employed by the hospital that clean the hospital, that do all the maintenance work at the hospital, and their housing is just as important as the nurses and the doctors and the technicians who work there, too. So I think that's something we need to think about, that they're also necessary because without them, we couldn't run the hospital, or the hospital couldn't be run without those people. So I hope that the city is open to when the hospital comes before them for the expansion and everything as far as this, so.
Anyway, final comments to the motion? Commissioner Len?
Then please vote.
Thank you.
Motion passed, 5-0.
And we'll, it goes right to the city council, so there's no appeal period. We'll continue on with the agenda. And that is Community Development Director, Mr. Town.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 100 of your packet this evening is the upcoming tentative hearing agenda for the commission. We do have five cases coming up for your consideration on July 14th, and two cases so far scheduled on the following date of July 28th and September 8th. Also, I just wanted to mention that the Hillcrest Rancho Zone change, which you recently considered and recommended a change of zone for, from RE to RE 20, will be heard by the city council on July 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Town. Thank you, Mr. Town. Minutes of the June 9, 2008 meeting. Is there a motion to approve? Commissioner Grumney?
I move approval of the meeting minutes of June 9, 2008.
Please vote. Motion passed, 5-0. And are there any AB 1234 reports? Anyone? Then, commission comments. Commissioner Len?
Thank you, Chair Reynolds. I just wanted to note that I will be out of state for the July 28th. Planning Commission meeting, will not be attending.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I will adjourn the meeting to July 8, 2008, 6:30 PM. Good evening.